All right, good evening and welcome, everyone. Before we begin the proceedings of our board meeting, I'd like to highlight our safety protocols and expectations. Due to CDC guidance placing Kent County in the substantial risk category for transmission of the COVID-19 Delta variant, we are requiring masks indoors for anyone on the grounds of GRPS property for all students, staff, and visitors regardless of vaccination status. If you need a mask, these are available at the entrances. Public comment cards and meeting agendas are located on the tables within the board chambers at both entrances. Once you fill out a comment card, please submit this in the drop box next to the comment cards. Our board assistant will collect the cards when I call for public comments and deliver them to our board secretary, Ms. Lewis. I will call on each individual, one at a time, to address the board at the presentation table right here in front of us. On behalf of our superintendent, Dr. Lidrian Robey, and the Board of Education, thank you for being here in attendance with us. With that, I will call this meeting of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education to order. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lewis, please call it off.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Grant?
Here.
Ms. Lewis, here. Reverend Mathews? Mr. Ross? Mrs. Williams? President Chaki?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. May I please have a motion for approval of this evening's agenda? Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. We'll move forward to our celebration this evening. Dr. Robey.
Good evening. We love readers, and it's always a good time to do reading. And I know that Ms. Chaney and Mr. Helmholdt are going to give us an update about what happens to good readers, or good things that happen to readers, excuse me.
President Chaki, members of the board, Dr. Robey, we're here to celebrate Good Things Happen to Reader. Unfortunately, our friends Becky Knack at the GRPS Foundation had an unexpected death of a friend, so she was not able to join us tonight. And the donor, Laura Heisinger, is out of town, but sends her regrets and just wanted to really share the level of excitement that she has. This program was founded in 2013. She originally wanted to be anonymous and has worked with us behind the scenes to purchase a book for every first grader across the district, has been doing so annually since 2013. Lori Heisinger is a former GRPS student. She went to Michigan Oak School, also known as Michigan Oak Elementary, many moons ago. She picked the book "Malfell" by Corey Tabor, and we had more than 46 volunteers last week in every single first grade classroom across the entire district. And Bridgette can share a little bit more. She played an integral role in helping to coordinate, get everything distributed. Hats off to Chief Larry Johnson and his crew for helping to get, how many books was it? 1,500, 1,400 books?
1,500.
Distributed in a rather short period of time.
Yes, it was tremendous. It truly, hats off to our operations department and Chief Johnson because they did deliver them quickly, and to the GRPS Foundation as well because each and every book has a sticker, "Good Things Happen to Readers" on it. So they stickered 1,500 books, coordinated volunteers, and had a great reception for the people ahead of time talking about how important literacy is, how important it is to build a library at home, a home library for our students. So we're extremely excited that kids can take those books home. And the book "Malfell" that Laura Heisinger selected was great, very cute. And Mrs. Williams, yes, you read, so thank you for that. And I know that you saw the book as well. But just about self-confidence and being brave and taking the leap. And that's what we certainly want to encourage all of our children to do, is be brave, go forth and take leaps. So especially when we're talking about literacy.
Great. All right, thank you so much for the update. Thank you to our operations team. Appreciate all your work. Okay, we'll move on to our reports from our student representatives. And we'll start with Mr. Chizlum this evening. Good evening.
Good evening. Two weeks ago today, a very important date passed for a lot of students in GRPS and certainly a lot of students, I guess, speaking from city. On November 1st was the early action deadline for college applications, which is a very important date for city students. Our counseling department sets out a goal for us every year for seniors to have their college applications fully submitted by the 1st of November. And so our class of about 120 was able to submit several hundreds of college applications by November 1st. Was certainly a good handful of them still yet to come. So it was really like a day of celebration for all of our grade, a pretty big deal, obviously, applying to places where we see ourselves in the future. And yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for the report. All right, and Ms. Cruz Calderon. Good evening.
Good afternoon. So we are planning, we have a meeting set up for this Wednesday. At this meeting, we are going to be reviewing the student handbook to make it more friendly for the students. And we're also, pretty sure we're planning to talk to Mr. Atkins?
Atkins, yes.
And so we also were able to attend those meetings for the seniors that were set up for college application, scholarship application. Many seniors were able to attend, and I feel like seniors benefited for that. And we're hoping to have that set up for next year. That's it, thank you.
Great. I look forward to hearing your feedback on the student handbook. I'm sure there will be many comments. That's great. I love it. I love it. All right, thank you for your reports this evening. We will move on to public comment for board agenda items. The ones I, yes, for board agenda items. The ones I have are for non-agenda items. And Ms. Anderson's looking to see if we have any.
You are.
All right, these are non-agenda items, so we will hang on to those until the end. And we'll move forward to our reports. Ms. Lewis, may we have the secretary's report, please?
Yes. The Academic Achievement Committee will be meeting Wednesday, December 1st at 4:30 in the Franklin Campus Administration Building. Finance Committee will be meeting Monday, November 22nd at 5:30 in the Franklin Campus Administration Building Auditorium.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lewis. Now we'll move on to our conference report outs. This last weekend, several board members attended the Michigan Association of School Board Conference and Delegate Assembly. And so Ms. Lewis is going to give a report on that attendance.
I will give a report on the General Assembly that was held on Friday night. Dr. Flores and I were the official delegates from Grand Rapids Public Schools. And at this meeting, what we do is we look at our legislative priorities as well as look at our policies and decide if they need to be changed or if we need new ones or whatever the case might be. And the two ones that perhaps had a bit more discussion, one was that the MASB urges school boards to commit to educating the public about the importance of vaccinations. And then the other one is about homeschooling and how we should be encouraging the legislature to set the same standards for homeschooled kids as we have for kids who attend our public schools. There was a lot of discussion about a lot of other things, but those are the two biggies.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lewis. Any other comments from anyone who attended?
I'll make a comment. Would you rather me do it now or at the end?
Sure, sure, please.
I attended all day on Saturday. And so I went to an opening that was just a general meeting. It was on data therapy led by Kendra Lawson. She talked about four types of data, descriptive, diagnostic, predictive, and prescribing data that you would use to prescribe. I also attended her session later in the afternoon that was, not as many people were there, so we could ask a lot of questions and just get some details. A lot of the things that we've been working on as a district, she spoke to, you know, not just using testing data, but using, trying to figure out how students are motivated and powered, a lot of student voice and data collected based on teacher's voice and student voice and that type of thing as well. I also went to a session that was led by Yvonne Kamal Kanual, who worked in public education her entire career. And she wrote a book called "The Leadership Passcode." One takeaway that I got from that session that I'd love to share with any of you if you're interested in is the evolution of an organization. And it just goes through, it has on the column on the left, decision-making leadership, strategic plan, use of data, professional learning, protocols and processes, personnel and budget resources. And then it helps you diagnose, kind of like we do with the evaluation, where we are as an organization. Are we informing stage, the develop stage, or the decline, resign stage? And you want to be in the middle? It was very interesting. And then the closing session for everyone was, it was led by Colonel Arthur Athens, and he was talking about extraordinary leadership. And it was super empowering. He talked about his mentor, who was a prisoner of war during Vietnam and was a prisoner for over seven years. And because of his rank, he was the leader in this prison camp. And he always would talk to him about, like, the three keys of being a leader are, do you know your job? And are you, and/or are you striving hard to learn it? Will you make the hard but right decision, even if it costs you personally, speaking to integrity? And do you care as much about the people you are leading as you do about yourself? And he spoke to, just in the hardest times, sticking to a routine and having that established in your everyday to help maintain your well-being, I guess. So it was super empowering and motivational. Thank you so much for letting, allowing me to attend. It was wonderful.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely, yeah. Thank you for attending.
No, I just want to thank you, those that went, and especially Dr. Flores and Ms. Lewis for doing the delegation. I know that's a lot of time, and it strengthens us as a board and also makes us look good as a district. So thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you very much. Great reports. And then, Mrs. Williams, I apologize. Back in September, you attended CUBE. CUBE is the Council of Urban Boards of Education. It's a national conference that's held on an annual basis. And so my apologies that we didn't follow up with you at that time, but thank you for being willing to share some thoughts and experiences from that conference.
Wonderful. So the keynote for that speaker, again, this was the conference for the Council of Urban School Boards, and it's their annual conference. The keynote speaker was Dr. Mae Jamison. She is an engineer, physician, and former NASA astronaut. The focus of the conference was on increasing equity. Board Director Steve Gallin III challenged board members to be committed to rejecting mediocrity. I attended workshops daily, and I wanted to share with you some information from workshop presenter Michael Taught. He is a founder and CEO of The Learning Science International. Michael shared that students, often of color and from low socioeconomic backgrounds, stay disadvantaged as they move through schools built on a legacy of instructional systems that denied them academic rigor and student agency. He stated districts need to move from classrooms of control and compliance to high-agency learning environments where students are self-managing and correcting. Instructional staff need to be trained to gradually release responsibility to students to develop agency. This is often a professional development for IB instructors. This type of PD can shift classrooms from low-rigor environments to classrooms of authentic, cultural, responsive, empowering, and learning environments where students thrive. Lastly, I would like to share some information about a memoir of resilience, visibility role models, and overcoming expectations titled "Miseducation" by Brandon P. Fleming. So I had a chance to purchase this, and he was there to speak. Mr. Flemings is the founder of the Harvard Debate Council Diversity Project. He brought along with him some of his students in which they attend a 10-month debate training at Harvard so that they can learn to compete in their program. They have an annual international debate competition. These students from Atlanta first entered this competition in 2017. It was the first all-black team to win. This Atlanta team dominated and won several years in a row with an undefeated record. His students stated debate helped them to be critical thinkers and to find their voice. I encourage you all to look up Brandon P. Flemings on YouTube. There's some wonderful articles about the work he's been doing and the book "Miseducated." Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Yeah, thank you for taking your time to go and attend and learn and ultimately share with us. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move forward to our committee chair updates. First is our Academic Achievement Committee, and we'll be back to you, Ms. Davis.
So academic achievement, we got our instructional council update that we get each meeting. It was pretty brief this time. They are just getting started for the year. They did go over a little bit of the process for new courses being introduced and implemented. And so basics were, a teacher will come with their ideas and the start of a curriculum. And then the second step would be more details to that with pacing guides and materials needed and all of that. And then they do a pilot of the course, and then they report back on the pilot. So at their next meeting, they're going to be hearing from two courses that were piloted. So we'll get more information at our next meeting. We then had an overview of CASL, which is the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, which is in the process of being implemented district-wide. The four steps to that implementation are building foundation and support, and then strengthening adult capacity, and then promoting student social-emotional learning, and finally reflecting and strengthening in that area. So they're targeting a curriculum for that for fall of 2022. And that will include community parent input as far as that goes. We also heard a lot about college and career readiness and a program called Xello, X-E-L-L-O, which is an educational development plan software. Each grade level has a benchmark for this system. Other things that are offered for our students are college application and essay workshops, which our representatives spoke of. College visits, onsite admissions. 11th grade has a college and career readiness course. There's a senior summit. These are just things that stood out to me. There was quite a lot of detail. I would encourage anyone that's interested to actually look at the PowerPoint that we saw at the Academic Achievement Committee meeting because it did have a lot of, just great information as far as this goes. And they also showed us a college planning guide that has been developed for students and parents. It's like a little pocket guide. Very cool. And then we got a presentation on field trips for the district. I just kind of wanted to see altogether what all our students are offered as far as field trips go and how those field trips are decided upon. And just as I had anticipated, we cover learning standards on all of our field trips. There's exit evaluations to see how each field trip went with teachers, students, and our partner organizations. And it is pretty amazing to see all the different opportunities our students have. And because of those opportunities, they're able to become better writers and readers, and they develop all of those hands-on experiences. They also spoke to a pilot field trip that's in the works for the culinary arts. So I thought that would be very interesting for our kiddos as well. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Davis? Okay, we will move forward to our Legislative Committee update. Dr. Baker?
All right, since you all have our new legislative platform in front of you, and we will be voting to support this platform in a minute. I'll go through some of the highlights, but if you have any questions, let us know. This should look fairly familiar to you all. There's not a lot of changes. But I will highlight some specific ones. I mean, if you look at this list, the top three issues are getting staff into the buildings, funding our students, and then also flexibility on accounting for students. But specifically, in terms of getting staff into the building, allow for immediate access to the critical shortage list. Get rid of the, or suspend at least the substitute teacher permit fees, which is a barrier towards individuals applying to be substitute teachers. Long-term scholarships for recruiting folks into the fields of education, school counselors, psychologists. The next area is equitable and adequate funding to meet student needs. So this is, again, has been our always platform. But now that we have a more equitable per pupil funding, it still does not account for the distinct needs of some students, high school students, at-risk youth, English language learners, et cetera. The third area is especially, a couple of these are really important. One is, we're still getting students enrolling in the district that have been, stayed at home throughout the fall because of COVID, and now they're coming into the district. But it's after count day, so we're not receiving resources to adequately fund those students, and there's quite a few. So it does drain resources that we would need for their education. Also, we would like to temporarily suspend the teacher and administrator evaluations, especially those that are based on growth. We, for two reasons mainly, I think that it's hard that these measurements were not built for measuring during this time of COVID. The measurements themselves, the growth measurements, are not very accurate, given the participation rates. And then finally, as a part of this, not to absolve ourselves of accountability, but to look for other ways to hold teachers accountable because we're not asking for suspension of accountability. We're just asking for suspension of these evaluation methods. Same would go with the read-by-grade-three law reform. Again, the metrics that are used to measure reading are difficult to administer under these conditions. Headley rollback, which I won't try to explain, but it still needs to be done. It's still a long-range education project for administrators. And also, Ms. Lewis really pushed us to consider this, and we came to a decision that we should include protecting voting rights as an important part of what the district does, which is empowering student voice. You have any questions? Thanks, we had a good, great, long discussion on these on Friday.
All right, great. Thank you for the overview. Okay, our superintendent's report is next. Dr. Robey.
Good evening, everyone. And so just very quickly, I know Mr. Helmholdt's coming up for a series of reports, but I wanted to just give a broad overview. We had our school expo last Thursday at Ottawa Hills High School, and it was a lot of fun. We saw lots of building leaders and teacher leaders and families come out, learn more information about various schools. And people had really cool things to show, including a phonograph, which I didn't realize the original phonographs were cylinders. You know how the record players are the disc-like? The original ones were cylinders, and I got to see that. And we had student violinists playing, and it was just a really, really fun evening. Mr. Helmholdt is going to do an overview update of our strategic planning update, also GRPS Foundation, and then an ESSR update specifically around the recruitment and retention of our students. Just as a reminder to our community, each month or so, we are doing specific reports around our ESSR dollars, how we've allocated monies and what that looks like, including timelines and outcomes. And we've done thus far our academic plan, our facilities, our athletics, our social-emotional supports. And now we are at recruitment and retention strategies. And so with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Helmholdt.
Great, all right. Thank you, Superintendent Robey, members of the board. So strategic plan update. Following your approval of the strategic plan framework on November 8th, on November 9th, we had kind of the training of the six strategic theme teams. Try to say that a few times fast. The strategic theme teams are based on each of, obviously, the strategic themes that were approved as part of the framework. The goal is to have approximately eight individuals per team. However, based on input from our community partners, we've expanded that. Accepted all the recommendations with a few minor exceptions from our community partners. They met on the 9th, so they kind of got a sneak peek of what it's going to look like between now and the end of January. We extended the timeline, so you will see that originally it was going to be just those first few weeks in January. That will now go until February 3rd, when those strategic initiatives will be presented to the Board of Education. We did add a stakeholder input forum that will take place the week of January 10th. And we're still working to finalize those details, but this was part of the feedback we heard from our partners, was we need to make sure there's another opportunity for stakeholder input. Because we're not pulling principals and staff out of the buildings, we are going to be very intentional in engaging with them prior to even that input session as well. So we'll be very intentional in bringing forth those voices from the buildings. We will also have an online stakeholder input opportunity, not unlike what we did this last phase. As I mentioned, board presentation is scheduled tentatively for February 3rd. After that, the Strategic Plan Initiative Action Teams will be identified the week of the 31st, and they will spend time doing their work from February until April 2022, at which time we'll be back before this board with a presentation. I'm going to stop there and see if there's any questions specific to the strategic planning update.
You mentioned the 31st, that was January, I'm assuming?
That's correct. I'm going to keep moving. GRPS Foundation update. We already heard about the Good Things Happen to Readers. They are in the process of processing their year-end appeal. But what I think we're all most excited about is the new executive director of the GRPS Foundation, who you will be hearing and seeing a presentation at your December 6th meeting. And we are in the process of finalizing all the details, but we do have an official new ED. It's not public yet, but we are very excited and just can't wait to tell the world about it. But we've got to go through a few more steps here.
You can just tell us.
Well, you might get a sneak preview via email here at some point soon, as it's becoming one of the worst-kept secrets in town. But we have to be sensitive to the other organization that this individual's currently involved with. There's a few other dynamics, but everything's largely in motion, and we're ready to hit the ground running. I'll stop there. Any questions on the foundation? All right. Julie, what am I hearing? Oh, video mute. There, I got it, sorry. All right, lastly, the ESSR 2 and 3 investment plan update was asked to specifically review the items that were set aside for student retention recruitment. We'll go through here. The first item was the multimedia video services and copywriters. This, the purpose here is to really focus in on promotional marketing videos with emphasis on our neighborhood schools. But this will include video for the district. You've already seen a few sneak peeks of the "We're Back 100%" campaign, some of the promos in advance of the expo. That is from the firm who we've already hired to begin doing this work. They're in the process now of scheduling meetings with the neighborhood schools to begin to develop those and is also finalizing a district video as well. We also hired some freelance writers. We know we've got to do a better job telling our story. And we have been using that to focus, again, on our neighborhood schools. We're also focusing specifically on athletics. So you'll see more of that as we also get down to the marketing firm and the PR firm that's down there further, down to the marketing firm and the PR firm that's down there further, where we can incorporate additional copywriting and some other media relations and some other things. You'll see that's listed as present in, from, between now and June 30th, at the end of this current school year. Now, the intent would be then to shift back to Board of Education dollars after that. This gives us kind of a one-year reprieve to get it up and running. Obviously, the targeted outcome is retention recruitment of students, but also increasing awareness and perception of our schools. The second item is the advertising events and sponsorship. We all but eliminated our, I mean, we, we've slashed the advertising budget by two-thirds, and we eliminated sponsorships completely. So what this does is restores the advertising special events and sponsorships to pre-COVID levels. That's at 193,000. That is, again, for a one-time, this current year at this point, some dollars could spill over if we don't use them all this year, but it's for the same targeted outcomes. Many of you have, I think, either board members have been attending some of the events, you're seeing more of a greater, a greater presence, and again, we're really staking our flag as a key community partner by being engaged in sponsoring these events, in, in participating in these events, and then obviously doing some pretty aggressive advertising that'll happen throughout the year with heavy emphasis on our neighborhood schools. The website is under development. This is, the, the goal was to develop and launch a new website this year. That's a $50,000 price tag. The quotes did come in a little bit higher than that, so we'll have to look at some adjustments, whether it's with ESSR or with BOE dollars, but very excited about the progress. We're still on track for that January date. We, because we have been, once again, trying not to pull building staff and secretaries out of the buildings, we are looking at possibly a softer launch in January, so we have time to engage with the building-based folks. But we're on track, and a little over budget from what was planned, but we're, we're accounting for that. The marketing firm, you will see going before your finance committee, and eventually before the board, a contract with a local PR marketing firm that will assist with just kind of the additional promotion, media relations. As you might recall, we did eliminate a director-level position in my department following Mr. Prey's departure, and so we are a little understaffed within department, so we're relying on some of our external help and support, so we can then kind of reorganize and begin to spread that work amongst our, our full-time staff. The yard signs, this is, the goal here is printing and distributing yard signs for the district, but also for every single school. That's at $35,000. Again, this is for one school year. We are going to wait till the spring, though. It doesn't make sense to be putting yard signs out in the winter, as much as that can sometimes help. You'll see a big push probably around spring break or shortly after spring break. Exterior school signs, we have a number of schools that either have outdated signs or don't have any sign, and in some cases, they're located on very high-visibility areas. So Schumett Hills is a great example, they're on Lake Michigan Drive, but there is no, other than a, a small little, you know, eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sign on Oakley, there's not a lot to tell people, hey, there's a great neighborhood school right in this neighborhood. So that's, and that's not a guarantee that that school will be it, but those are the types of sites that we'll be looking at and working with our facilities department. There's $250,000 set aside for that. You'll see the timeframe on that is spread out all the way to September 30th, 2024, as it's going to take time for bidding, installation, quite a bit more time than the other items listed above. Beautification of entryways, this is, the goal here, and this is consistent with the strategic plan, it's consisted with the equity work that we're doing. How do we really create a welcome, welcoming environment, one that invokes a sense of belongingness? So we're looking at what opportunities may be to kind of beautify the entryways. We have some old sticker welcome signs that were really nice 14 years ago, but it's time to update and really look at what we can do. I know there's been a lot of talk about, you have the word welcome in multiple languages, the different international flags, really just celebrating our diversity, our culture, and our commitment to belongingness. And then lastly, kind of the spirit wear, the swags, these are, we have a lot of events, and so we want to make sure we have some giveaways and some promotional items to help really hype up the district. Things like masks, like the one I'm wearing, which was produced locally here by a woman in minority-owned business, who's also a parent in GRPS, are just a few examples of what we're looking to do to help enhance those event, those events. So we're taking full advantage of every opportunity we have at these events to retain and recruit our, our students, uplift the district, improve awareness, improve perception, and total investment is 723,000. Stop there and ask if there's any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Helmuth?
Please come to the finance committee.
Fantastic.
We'll stay there.
Yeah, don't go.
You're next.
Oh, wait, I am next.
All right, we will move into our action items, and we will discuss our legislative platform, if there's any further discussion after Dr. Baker's overview, and ultimately vote on it. So anything you want to add, Mr. Helmuth, about the platform?
No, I, Tony did, Dr. Baker did a phenomenal job kind of walking through there. I just wouldn't know, again, we built the guiding principles back into this. You might recall the COVID platform was just simply five points, and that was it. The reason we put the guiding principles back in there is there are a lot of issues that come up, that are kind of one-off issues, that the state associations are typically the more focused on, whereas we like to zero in on specific issues that we really see as our top priorities. By having these guiding principles around meeting individual needs of students, individual characteristics of districts, as well as the local control to implement, that gives us a little bit of flexibility to weigh in on certain things as we're being asked about. Of course, if it elevates to the level, we'll bring it to the legislative committee, and certainly we'll communicate with the committee on that. But I just wanted to highlight those principles, and then just really, not, not much to add other than, again, I think the comprehensive educator kind of workforce development, the equitable, adequate funding, I just want to piggyback on what Dr. Baker said, is this is a historic year we're in right now. This is the first time in the history of G, of Michigan where we do not have a, an equity gap between the highest-funded and lowest-funded districts. You might recall Proposal A, the whole reason Proposal A came about back in 1994 was our, our school funding was based on local property taxes, which created a significant gap between the lowest and the highest-funded. We, over the course of 14-plus years, have, have advocated for a 2X formula to bring the bottom up to the top, and thanks to federal stimulus, thanks to a billion-dollar surplus in the school aid fund, the base foundation allowance is now, we have parity. It is 8,700 for all districts. So now, the goal is to leverage this new billion-dollar surplus in some of the other funds to begin to develop a more equitable, adequate funding formula that's truly based on meeting the student, the individual needs of each and every child. The Michigan School Finance Research Collaborative, which is what we were part of and have advocated, it's built into your platform, that is a natural study, a next step to begin to look at, how do we distribute, whether it's categorical funds, or better yet, it's changing the formula altogether to account for the true cost of meeting the academic, social, emotional, mental well-being of all students. And then the rest, look, similar flexibility what your previous platform was, is that we're not saying get rid of, although we may want to advocate for that, what we're, our message particularly to our Republican friends in the House and the Senate, who have the majority, is saying, you need to give us a one-year pause, because these test results are not fair, accurate, valid, or reliable. There was one statistic that showed that one of a neighboring school district only tested one kid, so that kid did pretty well, and as a result, their A to F card is like an A and a C. And so that's one student tested out of a whole district, and so as these, this data starts to come out and these accountability measures, we need to set the message and framework to make it clear, like, we actually went very aggressive to test as many kids as we could, yet that could very well be penalized, worked against us in the long run. So we need a temporary pause, there should be local accountability, we're not saying no evaluation, no accountability, give us the local flexibility to implement that, something that would be appropriate and adequate for at least this current school year. Grade, grade by three, read by grade three, same thing. Headly rollback, you can recall, we just went through this when we passed our, our non-Homestead village, that this is unnecessary, there's 550 school districts across the entire state that every, every certain years, they're going to have to go back out because property taxes are exceeding that, the, the 5%, which triggers the headly rollback, which requires the non-Homestead village, which is extremely confusing to voters, to go out, and thankfully, the voters of Grand Rapids have seen this enough times, and they approved it by more than 60%, but that was, that was $120,000 election. That's 120,000 that could go to buy a new teacher. And then the last part was the protecting the voting rights. There's a lot flowing around the state and around the nation, around voting rights, and the committee felt it important to stake a flag and make it clear that we are, as a district, stand in favor of protecting voting rights and increasing participation in our democratic process.
Mr. Helmuth, I'd like to say one thing. We agreed that these are not any priority that...
That's correct. In fact, the original draft had them listed 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, not unlike your strategic plan. We just said, let's take them off there, and any one of these could be a priority. Some are going to get more attention than the others. Headly, as an example, that's a long stretch for us to get that in this current legislature, but we feel it's important to begin talking about it, because sometimes, we may talk about it for 10 years, like we did for the 2X formula, and now suddenly, we have parity in funding, so a little pressure and support.
Excellent, any other discussion or comments? If there are none, I'll take a motion for approval, please.
Move to approve.
Please call the roll.
Yes, Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
President Shaki?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next is our consent agenda grouping, thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Is there any discussion or any questions about the consent agenda grouping?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
President Shaki?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, I have no discussion items this evening, so we'll move forward to public comment. As Ms. Lewis is reading the protocols for public comment, Ms. Anderson will check for any final comment cards.
If there is anyone present that is interested in giving public comment, there are two public comment sections in our agenda. First one is public comment for board agenda items, and the second opportunity is for commenting on non-agenda items. Individuals will be called to the speaker table one at a time to address the board during subsequent public, public comment time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person, with the exception, if an interpreter is needed, we will move that time to six minutes. You will need to state your full name before providing your comment. You will then start the, we will start the timer at the beginning of your public comment time, provide you with a one-minute notice indicating one minute remains, and you will need to complete your comment time upon being notified that three minutes have passed. Board members do not respond to public comment. Concerns will be brought to the attention of the appropriate staff. We value your input, and thank you for sharing.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lewis. It is my pleasure to welcome forward Maggie Zick for our first comment this evening. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Maggie Zick, I have two kiddos at Southwest Elementary. I have some follow-up questions and some general comments. Forgive me for not making eye contact, I'm going to read as fast as I can. First, I'd like to thank you and those involved in solving the water issue and providing the reusable water bottles for the kids at our school. I was very nervous that nothing would happen in regards to my concerns, as I was told by Dr. Gunnel that I'd be getting a phone call from her the next day after the meeting I spoke at, specifically about the water situation, and I did not. I had sent an email following up on the water topic that same evening and still had heard nothing, so thank you. I'm curious to know if there's any kind of specific update on our playground, and I'm hoping whatever changes to come are for both playgrounds that we have, because the front area of our school that's deemed a playground is a joke. Most of this stuff out there isn't even safe or age-appropriate. I know it's been established that the playground will be started in the summer of 2022, but does that guarantee completion for fall? Starting the school year without a playground shouldn't be an option, it's just not fair to the kids. I first came here to talk to you about the playground three or four years ago, and we've made zero progress. I've been hearing about a new playground since my oldest child started school, and she's in sixth grade now. In regards to our principal and assistant principal positions that need to be filled, I'm curious as to how much notice we will have before an interview process starts, and which round we, as parents, will be invited to participate in, if at all, and what is currently being done to actively pursue a qualified, certified bilingual candidate for our school. Also, no one seems to have gotten any answers as to why Carlos left. It's very suspicious that any administrator leaves a month into the start of school. He did make it clear to many of the parents that it wasn't for a better job, so again, this is concerning when trying to get a now-new qualified candidate to replace him.
One minute.
And by the way, Mr. Frost is doing a very good job. The mask survey that was recently sent out is concerning to me. You can no longer say that you're going by the science, because you have no idea what the COVID positivity rate or vaccination rate will be come January, in order to make a mask or no mask decision, and sending a survey out that the public has access to, and not just the actual parents in the district, is asking for skewed data. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you for your comments. Okay, next, we will welcome forward Letitia Sosa.
Good evening, welcome.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Letitia Sosa.
Good evening, my name is Letitia Sosa.
Yo vengo a hablar aquí porque tengo hijos también en la escuela Southwest.
I'm here to speak because I too have children at Southwest.
También quiero darles las gracias por las botellas de agua que enviaron para nuestros hijos. Les sirvieron mucho y se los agradecemos.
I also want to thank you for the bottles of water you sent out to our children, they were very, they were very useful.
También hace como un mes que vinieron otros padres a hablar sobre los problemas que tenemos en la escuela. Todavía no tenemos ninguna respuesta.
A month ago, a few of us parents were here to speak about some of the issues going on at the school. We have not heard yet an answer from that day.
También tenemos preguntas y preocupaciones por lo del principal, que él se fue, y todavía también no sabemos nada sobre si hay un principal, va a haber un asistente, o si ya tienen también un principal para la Mire High School?
We are still wondering and still have questions and have concerns about the principal that left all of a sudden. We still don't know what happened, and also wondering if you still, if you have anyone lined up to take his place, whether it's principal or assistant principal.
También otro punto es del, del playground, como habló la señora que habla antes que yo.
And another one of our concerns is the playground, which was already brought up as well.
Nadie se ha tomado el tiempo para reunirse con los padres de la Southwest, para informarnos de algún plan?
No one's taken the time to meet with the parents of Southwest to talk about any plan.
También para poder nosotros dar nuestras opiniones.
Or for us to express our opinions.
Algunos miembros del board nos dijeron que iban a visitar la escuela, todavía no la han visitado y estamos esperando.
Some of the board members mentioned that we're going to visit the school. We have not seen that yet, and still waiting for that visit.
Ahora sí que tienen que buscar otra solución para también poder hablar con los padres o ponerse de acuerdo con los padres.
You need to seek out solutions to talk to these parents or have, or meet with the parents.
Nos mandan cartas, pero no todos los padres la leen.
You sent letters out, but not every parent can read them.
No sé si haga otros métodos de cómo comunicarse con los padres.
I don't know if maybe there are other methods to be able to communicate with these parents.
Yo creo que debería de haber algunas formas para hacer unas reuniones de padres y que nos tomen en cuenta.
I would think there would be another way or form of communicating with these parents or to consider us.
También otra cosa que nos preocupa nosotros los padres, que nuestro maestro nos está mandando mensajes, para que mandemos con suéteres, chamaras a nuestros hijos a la escuela.
Another thing that we are concerned about is some of the teachers are texting us, must suggest that we need to send our children, our children to school with sweaters or winter gear.
Que porque el calentón de las aulas no está funcionando.
Because the heater in the classrooms isn't functioning.
También a mí me dijo la maestra que están pasando frío, entonces sí es una preocupación. También a mí me dijo la maestra que están pasando frío, entonces sí es una preocupación grande para todos los padres de la escuela Southwest.
Some of the teachers are telling us that the children are cold at the school, so that is a concern for us at Southwest.
Y muchas gracias.
And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next we'll welcome forward Eluvia Velázquez. Good evening.
Buenas tardes.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Eluvia Velázquez. Soy padre de familia de las niñas in Southwest Elementary y una de la Middle High.
My... I am mother of... One of my daughters goes to the school there and another at Middle High.
Como padre de hijos en la escuela de Southwest, me alarman las cosas que suceden hoy en día en nuestra escuela.
As a mother of one of my children that go to Southwest, I am alarmed by some of the things that are happening there nowadays.
Como cosas que nos faltan. Falta de personal. Claro, es así en muchos lugares, pero tenemos que pensar en la supervisión de los niños.
I know that a lack of personal is a thing that's missing in a lot of places right now, but I'm concerned about that at the school, and we need to think about the safety of our children.
Yo soy padre voluntario y he visto que durante el almuerzo y el recreo, el comportamiento de los niños.
I am a volunteer parent, and I've noticed that during lunch and recess time, the behavior of some of the children.
El comportamiento de los niños cambia cuando no hay supervisión.
Changes when there isn't supervision.
Son 225 niños y a veces una sola persona supervisándoles en el recreo. Esto es inaceptable.
There are 225 children in that school, and sometimes there's only one person, one adult, supervising all these kids during recess. This is unacceptable.
El otro día, el señor Gordman visitó nuestra escuela para una junta con el principal Forrest.
Not too long ago, Dr. Gordman visited the school for a meeting with the school principal.
Y los miré afuera conversando... Conversando con Frost. Tiene que cubrir el recreo casi todos los días.
I saw them outside talking with Frost, who has to cover the recess time every day.
Y ni mencionar a todos.
Not to mention everyone.
Lo que los maestros y para que tienen que hacer fuera de su trabajo.
Everything that children have to do outside of their work.
Otra de mi pregunta para ustedes sería qué más fuera de los días que le dieron a los maestros. Otra de mi pregunta para ustedes sería qué más fuera de los dos días que le dieron a los maestros y al personal.
One of my other questions is what is... What's to do with the two days that the teachers and personnel were giving off?
Qué más piensan hacer como distrito para que las cargas del trabajo, del personal, sea menos pesada?
As a district, what else do you think you can do for the personnel or the teachers to be less... Less weight on the teachers and personnel?
Nosotros los padres aquí presente queremos una junta con ustedes pronto.
Will the parents here present want a meeting with you soon?
Para presentarles un plan o algunas soluciones a tantos de los problemas mencionados.
To present a plan or at least some of the solutions to many of the issues that we've mentioned.
Hoy aquí tenemos que comenzar a hacer las cosas diferentes y pensar creativamente.
We have to start doing things differently and think more creatively.
Les tengo una pregunta para ustedes.
I have a question for you.
¿Nos pueden dar fechas hoy para una junta?
Could you give us dates today for a meeting?
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, next we'll welcome forward Abalina García. Welcome.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Abalina.
My name is Abalina.
Estoy aquí para hablarles de algunas preocupaciones de la Southwest.
I am here to speak to you about some of my worries at Southwest.
Por muchos años, mis hijos han sido parte de este distrito.
For many years, my children have been part of this district.
La Southwest es una joya de la escuela y un orgullo en nuestro barrio de que nuestros hijos sean bilingues en dos idiomas, español e inglés.
Southwest is a jewel in our district and our neighborhood, the fact that our children are able to speak both languages in our bilingual English and Spanish.
Mis preguntas para ustedes son: ¿Por qué hay tantas necesidades en nuestra escuela? ¿Por qué no nos tratan o no recibimos el mismo trato de la escuela Mucian City o la CA Frost? Por mencionar algunas.
My... One of my questions is, why don't we receive the same treatment or are taken into consideration as some of the other schools like Mucian, City, or CA Frost? Just to mention some.
¿Quién decide que tantos recursos, dinero reciban las Southwest?
Who decides how much of the resource or money Southwest receives?
Es una escuela donde más niños hay y donde mejor se comportan.
This is one of the schools where there are most children and more well-behaved.
Con mucho respeto a todas las otras escuelas.
With all due respect to all the other schools.
Como padre, me gustaría ser parte de estas decisiones que se toman.
As a parent, I would like to be part of the decisions made.
Quiero ser parte del plan para mejorar a nuestra escuela.
I want to be part of the plan for the better of our school.
Lo otro es que los baños y toda la escuela en general está muy sucia. No hay suficiente personal para limpiar.
Another thing is the bathrooms and so much of the other... On the school are dirty. There isn't enough personnel to keep them clean.
Muchos niños están enfermando.
Many children are getting sick.
Como ya les dijimos, está muy sucia y por lo mismo, eso es la preocupación de muchos padres porque en las conferencias se dieron cuenta muchos padres que está bien sucia la escuela.
As I've already mentioned, I'm very concerned. Like me, many other parents are concerned about how dirty the school is.
La idea de muchos padres están dispuestos a ayudar a limpiar, pero siempre y cuando den un estipendo a esos padres porque sabemos que sí hay dinero.
Some of these parents... The idea of some of these parents is they are able and would volunteer to help clean the school, but they would like something in exchange because they know that there are... There is some money in the district.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, welcome forward Roberto Hernandez. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Roberto Hernandez, and I'm a student in Southwest Middle High School, and I'm here to talk about the problems that are building. So, one big problem in our school is the... How like dirty it is. It's really dirty. The bathrooms are dirty. And, you know, sometimes I can't go to the bathroom myself because it's dirty, and there's days that I don't even go to it. Another big problem about our school is the lunch that they serve. Sometimes it has molded it, and there... Sometimes it's expired. The other day, the milk was expired, and the orange juice and apple juice was expired, and a lot of food was expired. And some other day, like a week ago, some students found mold in their peaks, I think it was. And that's a big issue to us since like... Since like we need something to eat, of course. And also, another big problem is our... The gym. The gym doesn't have... The heater doesn't work in there, and it's very cold. And in some classrooms, it's very cold, too. And it's like a big problem to us because they don't let us wear hoodies that are in the classroom. So, you know, we got to put them in our lockers, and we... Like, it's just cold. And, yeah, that's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you for your comments. All right, welcome forward Sandra Diaz, please. Good evening.
Good evening.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Señor del distrito, the GRPS.
I am from the GRPS district.
Digo, señores del distrito, muy buenas noches.
Members of the board of the district, good evening.
Me dirijo ante ustedes.
I'm here before you.
Para... Como madre de familia.
As mother of my children.
De mi hijo, que estudia en el décimo grado de high school.
I have a 10th grader in high school.
Me dirijo ante ustedes para informarle las necesidades que sufrimos en la escuela.
I am here to mention and bring up to you the necessities in the school.
Como padre de familia, es una situación muy alarmante y desesperante.
As a parent, this is a very alarming and desperating situation.
Que estamos viviendo.
That we are living.
Nosotros los padres y nuestros niños.
We, the parents and our children.
Que son el futuro del mañana.
That are tomorrow's future.
Sé que Southwest High School es la nueva generación que tenemos.
I know that Southwest is the new generation we have.
Y es para que nuestros niños se sientan con más entusiasmo de poder continuar para el futuro.
I feel the children should feel more enthusiastic to move on to the future.
Pero yo como madre, sé algunos problemas que están sucediendo ahí. El estudiante apenas lo acaba de mencionar.
As a mother, I am aware of some of the issues going on at the school, like one of the students just mentioned.
Pero yo vuelvo y repito que mi niño me ha dicho, y esta mañana, hoy le pregunté a mi sobrina también que cómo fue el día, cómo fue la escuela, cómo fue la comida, y ella me dice, tía, mi pizza tenía mold.
My son and my niece have mentioned, when I asked how was your day at school, she mentioned that her pizza had mold in it.
Entonces, la comida es algo muy importante. Sabemos que es la nutrición para cada uno de nosotros, y la leche expirada, el jugo, la fruta, el pancake, la pizza siempre algunas veces tiene mold.
We know that our kids' food is their nutrition, the milk, the juice, the apple, the pizza, the pancakes.
Y también quiero volver a recordarles que los niños están sufriendo frío. He tenido algunas pláticas con los maestros y me dicen, es mi primer año estar aquí. Así se trabaja con este frío. Yo les digo, lo siento mucho, pero yo no sabía que siendo una escuela nueva podíamos tener ese problema.
I have spoken with some of the kids and I've... Some of the teachers there. Again, I repeat, our students are suffering with... They are cold at the school. Some of the teachers have mentioned to me, this is my first year here. I didn't know that you were supposed to work in the cold environment.
Sé que en otras escuelas también hay problemas. Tengo a dos hijos que fueron estudiantes de high... de Southwest, Middle High, Middle School, y ahora están estudiando la universidad. Yo sé que es estar en otras escuelas secundarias. También hay problemas, pero no tanto como la que estamos viviendo ahora.
I have two other children. I know that other schools have issues, too. Two of my children are now in the university, and they are having issues, too. But it's not like being at this school.
Entonces, mi pregunta es, espero que ustedes escuchen nuestras voces y que nos den una solución al problema.
So, I say to you, I hope that you can hear our voices and give us a solution to our issues.
Porque no queremos más niños enfermos. No queremos más niños que se queden en casa y que no estén tomando... No estén asistiendo a la escuela diario cuando ellos pueden hacerlo. Debemos que tener un esquecho y saber que los niños estén comiendo bien y que toda la... Toda la información que nos manden, que nos los manden a tiempo porque hay unas informaciones que a veces nos llegan después de lo que ha pasado.
We want to make sure that our kids are healthy and do not get sick anymore. We don't want kids to stay at home anymore, knowing that they could be in good health. We want to be able to make sure that our kids are eating healthy food or lunch at school, or at least have a schedule.
One minute.
Sí, y les agradezco bastante por la atención que me han dado y la oportunidad que he estado con ustedes en esta junta. Espero tener una buena respuesta de ustedes. Muchas gracias.
I appreciate your attention and the opportunity for being here today at this meeting. I hope to hear a response from you soon.
Thank you for your comments. All right, next we'll welcome forward Reina García. Good evening.
Buenas tardes.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Reina García.
My name is Reina García.
Mi hijo actualmente atiende noveno grado en la escuela de Southwest Middle High Academy Bilingual.
My son is currently a 9th grader at Southwest Middle High Bilingual Academy.
Mis nietos atienden la escuela elemental de Southwest Community Campus.
My grandchildren are the Southwest Community Campus.
Escuela que refería a mi hija con muy buenos comentarios.
The school that my daughter referred with a lot of good comments.
Buenas tardes a todos los miembros presentes de la junta directiva y a todos los presentes aquí.
Good evening to all present and all members of the board meeting.
Gracias por esta oportunidad de poder expresar todas las preocupaciones que traigo escritas en esto.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express all of my worries to you.
Hoy vengo con mucha indignación a este recinto o a este espacio, y le digo... Y lo digo de la manera más honesta.
I am here today with most indignation, and I say this with all honesty.
Las razones son las siguientes.
The following reasons are.
GRPS invirtió 20 millones de dólares en edificar la high school de Southwest y con muchas promesas, incluyendo el bienestar de nuestros hijos.
GRPS invested 20 million dollars in...
En la Southwest Community.
At Southwest Community.
Southwest Community... Southwest Community Campus Middle High.
Southwest Community Campus Middle High.
Considero que al tomar esta decisión de construir esta escuela, se debió haber hecho con responsabilidad compromiso y visión.
I am assuming and I consider that at the time this school... The decision to make this school, it was made with all due responsibility.
Compromiso y visión.
Compromise and vision.
Estas son mis peticiones.
This is my petition.
Preocupaciones.
Worries.
Probleáticas. Probleáticas o problemas.
Continuar.
Y sugerencias.
My concerns and suggestions.
Tenemos un derecho humano que es la alimentación.
We have a right as humans, which is the food.
Que debería ser saludable.
Should be healthy.
Ya escuchamos anteriormente a un estudiante aquí diciendo la comida que se le está proveyendo a nuestros hijos en esa escuela.
Previously, you heard a student from this school mentioning what kind of food is being fed to the students at the school.
Y lo vamos a seguir repitiendo hasta que seamos escuchados. No es aceptable lo que está haciendo el distrito a no poner atención a estas problemáticas.
And we will keep repeating this issue until this district listens and our voices are heard. heard. This is an unacceptable situation.
Tenemos la problemática del aire acondicionado, no funciona desde el verano pasado que nuestros hijos asistieron a la escuela.
We have the issue of the air conditioning as well. It doesn't work since last year's summer.
Y el frío ya llegó.
And now the winter is here.
Y tenemos que prestar atención a esta situación porque se están enfermando nuestros hijos y va a ser su responsabilidad de ustedes las consecuencias de su salud.
We need to pay attention to all of these issues. This is your responsibility, our kids' health depends on it.
Confiamos en ustedes.
We trust in you.
Participamos en las reuniones que ustedes nos prometieron muchas cosas que iban a pasar muy buenas en este edificio.
We have been to the meetings in which you have promised that a lot of good things would happen in this buildings.
Otra de las preocupaciones.
One of our other concerns is.
Mi hijo tiene un IEP.
My son has an IEP.
El IEP es un documento escrito que la escuela y los padres desarrollamos juntos.
This is a written document in which the school, the parents, the teacher develop together.
Entre otras cosas, el IEP describe las necesidades del niño y pone en una lista los servicios que recibirá.
Among other things that IEP describes, different necessities of the child along with other needs.
Me enteré que María Morín, la persona encargada de la terapia, del habla, ya no, ya está retirada y no está en la escuela.
I am aware now that Maria Morín is no longer the therapist and has retired from the school.
No tenemos una persona bilingüe atendiendo este, el IEP para padres que no hablan el inglés, el idioma inglés.
So now we don't have a bilingual person for this.
Y ustedes saben perfectamente que el IEP es un documento legal, que nosotros como padre tenemos derechos y los hijos tienen derechos y que debe estar muy bien supervisado para saber qué está pasando con la educación especial.
You all are very well aware that the IEP is a legal document in which parents, teachers, and parents should be aware of all of the children's needs.
One minute.
One minute.
Nuestros estudiantes de noveno grado no tuvieron homecoming, no hay deportes, no hay enfermera, no hay PTO, PTO, y no tenemos un asistente principal.
Our children, the ninth graders, do not, did not have a homecoming, did not have, we don't have PTO, no nursing, and no sports.
Y se fue el asistente principal, el señor Ramirez.
And the assistant principal, Mr. Ramirez, left.
Incluyendo al director Carlos de la Barrera.
As well as the principal Carlos de la Barrera.
Considero que GRP, que considero que tanto la escuela elemental y la high school están en crisis en estos momentos.
I consider that the elementary school and high school are in crisis at this moment.
Y esperamos que no por ser minoría no seamos escuchados.
And I hope that not because we are less or a minority that we won't be heard.
One minute.
Y para, y para nosotros continuar esta colaboración entre ustedes y los padres debe haber una relación de confianza.
In order for us to continue collaborating with you as parents, there should be trust in between.
Y que estamos perdiendo.
And we are losing.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, next we'll welcome forward Mary Bowens. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to read a letter that was given to me by a departing member because she couldn't be here tonight, but it's addressed to the school board, so I'm going to read it. Dear Board members, I began my journey with Grand Rapids Public Schools as a substitute teacher in the late 1990s while still in college. And after graduating, was offered a full-time teaching position. I have recently found new employment. I will always have GRPS students and staff in my heart. I would like to offer my reflections gleaned over a career so that others may stay and continue on. First and foremost, teachers in GRPS do not feel valued or treated as the professionals they are. Their pay is under average by about $10,000 per year as compared to local urban and suburban districts. Over a career, that money adds up. These same underpaid teachers are buying supplies out of their own pockets and creating donor's juice programs, hitting up their friends and families time and time again, offering teachers a classroom budget of even $100 yearly while still supplying basic classroom needs would go a long way to make teachers feel supported. Teachers are being asked to continuously add to their plates of work with nothing being removed. They are subbing, taking extra students, having overloaded classes and caseloads. It would go a long way to remove barriers and strenuous tasks that do not directly impact students. If it doesn't help students, it shouldn't be a priority. Conversely, the barriers that impede student success and safety should be prioritized. Adequate staffing, resources and materials, and clear safety plans that are routinely reviewed and revisited should all be in place. Your teachers do not feel heard. They offer solutions only to be ignored.
One minute.
They have worked within the system to try to make changes and only end up feeling defeated time and time again. Things that should be expected often have to be fought for. Working phones, keys, working technology, the list goes on and on. Your teachers are tired of fighting for them. There are systems put in place that are punitive towards them and do not need to be such as the tripod survey being evaluative instead of just informative for personal growth. Counting absences that are earned, an earned benefit against an evaluation when they are used. Little things like making teachers swipe in and out like a factory worker multiple times in a professional development does not breed trust. What it boils down to is trusting your teachers, offer them support, not penalties. You are in control of making decisions that will help to retain teachers and I hope you do the right thing. Thank you, a former GRPS teacher.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bowens. All right, so welcome forward Brett Graham. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brett Graham, a parent at Southwest School. Thank you all for listening to my previous statements and putting me in contact with the appropriate leaders from concerns before. Conversations with Mr. Helmuth, Dr. Gunnel, and Mr. Frost, our interim principal, have gone well and are still ongoing. I look forward to hearing more about the playground planning and maintaining involvement in that process. I have a few things for tonight. Curious on where our vice principal hiring sits. I was informed we had a strong candidate who is nearing a placement. If this is true, that would be wonderful news for our school and probably a big boost to both parents and staff. We need some wording clarifications on the new playground. The main playground should be for K through six, but I believe it was worded as two through six. I requested an early planning time with my involvement in that, that it be adjusted and prepared for grades K through six, as all these grades will use the playground. And also it'd be wonderful to include our pre-K playground for some upgrades as state regulations require specific size structures per ages. And as of now, I believe we only have one single structure that's appropriately sized and then a handful of toys that are brought out each day by one of the teachers for these children to play with. I mean, as simple as this is, it could hinder in student retention for the school and probably should not really be overlooked. And then could we consider a curb appeal facelift, for example, cleaning the brick or the exterior of our building? It's been mentioned a few times, just dark and not warm and welcoming to people and it has a good presence in our community. And consider upgrading a sign including the accurate name of our school now. Southwest Elementary School Academia Bilingüe. And possibly the scrolling marquee style allowing our fantastic secretaries to put announcements, events, and activities up for parents and community to easily see. This and the playground point would go hand in hand considering the construction process and disturbance to the school grounds. And from the sounds, this may already be in process per Mr. Helmuth's words earlier this evening in the ESR update. Another, Dr. Gunnel told me we lost our kindergarten teacher per number projections. My question is, why did we lose our kindergarten teacher halfway through the first semester if it was based on projections? Also, it sounds like our district is happy with our teacher-to-student ratios and I'll need to look into that further because I don't know what our, our ratios are, what the goals are, but it's been voiced many times tonight and it's a concerning topic. And I think my interactions and other that I've heard, I just added, more communication to parents from the district would aid in a lot of the concerns and conversations that we hear over and over, so just a few more letters frequently would, would go a long way, I think. So thank you again for your time.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. All right, our final, final public comment this evening is Mr. DeAndre Jones. Good evening. Welcome.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
My name is DeAndre Jones. First of all, I'd like to talk about some canvassing I did. So, heard this school board president, a couple people talk about the Black Hills and you guys don't know what that neighborhood wants to see, so I actually took upon the time and I knocked 100, more than 100 doors in the Black Hills. It was pretty early, it's like nine something, so probably talked about more than like 50 people out there. And so I actually knocked every single door in Walnut Grove, which is the apartments up there in the Black Hill. That neighborhood doesn't get a lot of love. And so, heard many stories, met some people that don't talk English, met a lot of different people, actually heard stories of people who actually went to the Adelante High School and a woman actually met her husband and they actually got married two year, two months ago and her husband makes music, her son likes to play video games. So, it's a couple of different things people talked about. Actually met the woman who, her grandma was the neighborhood president. They actually don't have a neighborhood association up there. I'm really big on neighborhood associations and how they actually play a part in connecting to the city. There's a couple of different things I'd like to mention. Things that actually make a neighborhood go up because people actually want their property value to go up. For their property value to go up and be able to create equity for the next room of students that may grow up into the Grand Rapids Public School system, they don't want to see affordable housing, they actually want to see, some people are for affordable housing. I did ask people, what do they want to see? Fairly? Do they want to see a community center? What do you want to see other than a community center? Do you want to see affordable housing? A lot of people said they want to see both, but there's a couple of different factors that plays into that. Neighborhood comp, location, local school district unemployment, the local market economic indicators, some things that actually making the neighborhood go up or property values in the neighborhood go up. Good schools, neighborhood parks, technology companies, theme parks, neighborhood theaters, high-end restaurants, colleges, and public transport.
One minute.
So, what I'm trying to say is that people in that district, well, people in that neighborhood, they really don't want to see affordable housing because that won't make their neighborhood. They said that people, they said that the Grand Rapids Public, the Grand Rapids Police Department actually does training in that school, which I don't actually know, but that's what people in the neighborhoods say. They actually want to see activities. They have a neighborhood park that isn't constructed well and they actually, I talk about sustainability. What these people talked about at Southwest, I would look into geothermal, or maybe some geothermal repairs, so some sustainability that actually heat up the school and it'd be sustainable. So I just wanted to let you guys know I did some canvassing and those are some things that actually makes the property value go up in a neighborhood where it's predominantly a minority neighborhood, where it's predominantly Hispanic people, where it's predominantly people that don't speak English, they want to see their property value go up, they want to see equity. And I know you guys would want to see it too if you guys stayed in that neighborhood, so I would just say just do what's best for the next people. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your comments. All right, superintendent comments, Dr. Robey.
Just quickly to follow up, I know that most of the comments this evening were from our Southwest community and we're always appreciative of that. There is a meeting that's actually, has been planned and scheduled with the PTA tomorrow. It's either four or 4:30, I can't tell the exact time, but we'll make sure that that communication does go out again this evening and tomorrow. So there is a planned meeting for families with the PTA, with our executive director and deputy superintendent. And you'll be able to hear kind of some updates related to some of the issues that were brought forward this evening. Just my only other comment is, as we are in the holiday season, 2021 has gone by really quickly and as I try to reflect on the year, just that spirit of gratitude of all the work that our families and our staff and our support staff have done all year long and we just hope that as we are wrapping up 2021, that it is healthy and safe for everybody. We hope to be 2022 in a better spot. We are doing lots of different things that we've communicated to our broader community to make sure that we are well-equipped to enter into the new year. And so with that, I will end my comments.
All right, thank you, Dr. Robey. Move forward into board member comments. Ms. Davis, may I begin with you?
No comment tonight.
All right, thank you, Dr. Baker.
Yeah, I just want to show appreciation for the public comment tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
No comment.
Mrs. Williams.
No comment.
All right, thank you, Dr. Flores.
Just to also echo appreciation for the parents that came forth and the, and the teacher reflection. I think we have a great school district, we have great leadership and if there's any way that I can help in, in bridging, be happy to do that and I encourage board members to, to lend that, that also expertise and, and connections to community.
All right, thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Grant.
No comment.
Ms. Lewis.
No comment.
All right, I have no further comment either, so this meeting is adjourned. Board members, please stick around for the holiday card. All right, thank you, everyone.